Mr. Hewitt is absent. Assistant City Attorney at Storm Lake?
Here.
City Planner Armando.
Here.
All right, item number three is public comment for either any item on the agenda or general public comment, limited to three minutes each. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Now I'll bring them back to the, uh, item number four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
In a second. I have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved unanimously. Number five, approval of the minutes. Move to approve as submitted?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion to approve and second and no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. unanimous. Item number six, announcements and committee reports.
Commissioner Volker was the planning commission. Uh, I think I mentioned at the study session that the city council was going to have a workshop on the ready plan analysis prepared by CFA. It's been located at eight. Then his agenda is on the regular agenda, however, the, uh, the board request is going to be requesting that that be for until the 22nd, so that we can actually have a separate workshop in the board hall setting prior to the September, sorry, until the 22nd. It will not be, um, it will not be discussed on the, uh, session.
We approved the, uh, agenda as written, which has item number seven, discussion of distribution of staff material. Um, any interest in putting that after the, uh, can we do that, Mr. Attorney, even though we've approved the agenda?
Um, I have a motion to reconsider the approval of the agenda. Change it that way.
I'll accept the motion to, uh, approve, to reconsider the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to, uh, just for that.
To, uh, to, I think that's a motion to move item seven to the, uh, into the, no, no, no.
Motion to reconsider the agenda and then a motion to change it.
Uh, we have a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
I will accept a motion to, uh, move item seven to, uh, the, uh, after, uh, item number 10.
I would love to make that motion.
I would like to second.
Any discussion?
And that motion includes a new approval of the agenda with the amendment?
Yes, it does.
Yes, that does.
That's what I meant.
We were certain that was the case. And we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are the, are the guys back there controlling these microphones or should we do it?
They are. They should be controlling them.
All right, we'll move item seven to after item 10. And, um, we will move on to the first public hearing item, PCN 12028, Rising Tides, L. L. City.
I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before each night is a consideration of impossible action on an amendment to a final plan of development for Kylie Ranch North Phase Four. To change the land use designation from 22.1 acres of MHR and 2.7 acres of HR to, um, AC or arterial commercial and to revise the Development Standards Handbook and other matters properly relating to that. On the site approximately totaling two, 24.8 acres located at the northwest corner of Pyramid and Highland Ranch Parkway. This is Sparks, this is Pyramid, and this is Highland Ranch Parkway. It's these two properties right here that we're talking about. As you can see right now, they're designated as a MHR. I'm having trouble saying that. MHR and HR. And we're proposing to change them to AC. Besides amending the land use designation, the handbook also proposes changes to the standards for development for the commercial land uses. The standards include, but are not limited to landscaping, arts, architecture, and site development standards. At Tuesday's study session, there was a request for a list of the corporate officers, which I have handed out to every one of you. The tentative handbook was approved with the, the original tentative handbook was approved with AC or arterial commercial in this general area. This amendment is actually changing the land use, or this property, back to the original land use designation. Staff is of the opinion that the final handbook is in substantial compliance with the tentative handbook and is therefore recommending approval of the amendment to the Phase Four Kylie Ranch North final handbook, based on the facts and the findings I set forth in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Karen? Karen, I assume we made the adjustment that we noted on the study session on P E 21?
Yes, I've corrected the staff report that's in the, the, um, public file.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Karen. Karen, in regards to the landscaping, um, I see there's going to be a water feature. Do we know what type of water feature or what it is?
At this point, no, we don't have, it's all preliminary, conceptual. We don't know.
Will that come back to us?
Uh, no. That'll be most likely done through a side plan review unless the use that gets proposed would be a special use, on the list of the special use permits.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Karen? Is the applicant in the audience? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers, and I have with me tonight Scott Christie with, uh, representing Rising Tides, the property owners, and Don Lillyquist with Maverick, who is, uh, awaiting if there's a positive change to build a facility on there. Uh, as Karen mentioned, we're really changing it back to the original AC land use designation, and that was the designation, you know, there was a change of ownership, and so now the new owners are looking back and, and modifying things and kind of getting their business plan together. So, changing it back to AC, which makes sense on Pyramid Highway and, uh, Highlands Ranch Parkway. And then we worked really hard with staff and, uh, to, to kind of simplify the handbook, and I think we, we came in hand in hand with the staff on that, so it's a lot, going to be a lot easier to implement. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm just glad to see something going on out there.
So are we.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, so I will open up the public hearing. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic for up to three minutes?
I have a question.
You come right on up. Please state your name, uh, for the record.
My name is Tom Iorio. I happen to live in the area, near the area where you're going to be doing whatever you're going to be doing. I guess you're going to turn it into commercial property, is that correct?
That's what's being proposed, yes.
Okay. Uh, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, how is that going to affect, you know, resale property of my house if I ever wanted to sell my house in that area? And what kind of commercial endeavor are we talking about here as far as, what are we building? Is basically my question. Are we building like some kind of, uh, warehouse? Are we building a, uh, restaurant? Are we building something for the public that everybody can enjoy? Or are we just doing this to, you know, sort of like, you know, help us in the community, uh, you know, to expand? So, I'm like, kind of concerned, my basic question is, how does this affect the people that live in that area? And what are we to expect? And how much more of the area are they going to turn into commercial property? Because my main concern was this thing that I got here, and it shows a big red line. I don't know if you could see that on there or whatever it is. I don't know how that works that way.
So turn it off.
Oh, okay. So my main concern is, you know, like, uh, you're talking about the blue area, but I'm looking at all this red area, and I happen to live like over this way. And, uh, are we going to turn all of that red area eventually into commercial property? Or are we just talking about a little bit at a time? And I'm not for, you know, not against, you know, expanding or doing what we need to do, but I'm, my concerns are, like I said, uh, you know, how is this going to affect the people that live in that area? What are we building in the area? And is it going to benefit all of the people in that area or just special people that want to do something in that area? So, those are basically just my questions, and if somebody could allay my fears here, that, you know, my, my property value is not going to take a nosedive, you know, because we decided to build some huge, huge, you know, warehouse facility, and I understand that that will bring jobs, you know, which we desperately need, and I'm not saying that we, I don't want people to work. Um, my concern is how is that going to affect not only myself, but the people in that area? And basically, uh, thank you, and that's basically all I have to ask, okay?
I'm sorry, did you state your name? I didn't hear.
Tom Iorio.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it, Tom.
Those are my questions, okay?
I, I will address one of your questions, and we'll get Karen and the applicant back up here to try to answer some of the others. But, um, this, this large area of Kylie Ranch has been subject to, to all of the zoning and, um, code limitations, so we're dealing, any time that any change is made other than this would require an applicant to come back and go to the staff and request a change and go through the entire process, come back to the planning commission again. So this does not assume, or does not even predict in any way that there'll be any other changes going forward. And if it did, it would require the same kind of process that we're going through with this particular one.
So this is going to be actually on the west side of Pyramid Highway?
Correct. The northwest corner of that intersection.
So that's what we're talking about at the moment?
And that's all that we're talking about at the moment.
Okay.
Can I ask the applicant to perhaps to come up and?
I'll go back to that.
Yes.
Sir?
I, I don't know what, to what extent you're willing to talk about the details of, of the possible use of that, of that land, but, uh, you can talk in generalities or specifics as you desire.
Okay. Well, when we worked on the, on the handbook, we outlined the changes, um, or the permitted uses, and that's on page 2.7 of the handbook. And I'll just run, run down a list of things to give you an idea of what would be allowed. Animal clinics, athletic health clubs, banks, financial institutions, bars, restaurants, car washes, childcare, convenience stores, drugstores, dry cleaner, fast food, gas station, retail, hardware, um, hotel motel, medical office uses. So it's, it's the, kind of the typical service type uses that you find in a, in a commercial area. And then uses with a, that require a special use permit would be like churches and entertainment venues and schools and outdoor sales and, and the like. So those lists, those uses are, are all listed on two dash seven.
And I think you did make reference to a, a potential tenant earlier in your presentation, so.
Yes. There is a potential, um, sale of a parcel. It's, uh, you know, not finalized or anything yet, um, but it would be the Maverick, um, gas and convenience stores, um, on the corner of Highlands and Pyramid Highway, and be subject to all the, uh, the architectural standards. Kind of similar to the one that you saw with, um, at Sparks.
Prater.
Yeah, Prater. Only it wouldn't be a Marina theme. It's more of a, uh, more of a ranch theme and kind of ranch.
Right. Thank you. Any questions?
And so again, one of the uses, you were worried about warehousing, warehousing would not be acceptable under this, would, or would it?
Mini storage and RV storage is allowed only if approved with a special use permit. It's not a, an outright use, like the restaurants and the pharmacies and the, that kind of thing.
Any other question?
I would say, can I ask my question?
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we're still in a public hearing. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak for up to three minutes? Feel free to come forward. If not, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the planning commission. Any additional questions for Karen or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council, uh, PCN 12028 on the final handbook amendment based on the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with it. Item number nine, uh, PCN 12030, The Rock Church.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners, Tim Thompson, Senior Planner, for the record. Uh, before you tonight is a special use permit amendment request from The Rock Church. Uh, back in 2006, a special use permit was approved to allow for a preschool. The preschool use was specifically identified in the Irratible East Area Plan, which, um, this property was a part of up until recently. Uh, with the removal of the Irratible East Area Plan from the city's master plan, we're now looking at, um, the, um, the PO zoning is going to supersede the, the, the land use in that former, or the Irratible East Area Plan. The PO zoning does not have preschool listed as an allowed use. However, what we're looking at is a childcare facility and a private school. And so the request really centers around, um, terminology tonight, changing, changing the, the terminology from preschool to childcare facility and private school, uh, so the church can do before and after school care. Specifically, uh, the change relates to, uh, condition number nine, which deals with the maximum number of children. The, uh, current maximum is 134 students, or 134 children, and the, the term in the condition is enrolled. And in order to bring this more in line with how Washoe County Social Services, um, looks at a childcare facility, uh, the proposal is to change that to onsite at any given time. Two hundred and thirty-four, um, that number, um, is not random. Uh, two hundred and thirty-four is the maximum number of children that can be accommodated with the existing traffic improvements that were required through the previous special use permit. That's, that previous special use permit required some median extensions, um, the lengthening of some turn pockets. Um, there was a requirement to, um, install a gate along Irratible Drive. The idea being to, uh, to get those, uh, dropping their children off at the school to actually enter on the Vista Boulevard, uh, at the Vista Boulevard entrance, and then drive up to the church, drop the kids off, and then come back out on Vista versus making a left-hand turn from Irratible south onto Vista, given, um, the amount of traffic. It is not the city's desire at any point to install a traffic signal at that intersection simply because we're trying to get that traffic from the north down to the freeway, particularly in the morning commute, and then in the afternoon to get the cars, um, out to the northern part of Sparks. And so, um, you know, we are not anticipating on putting a, a signal there. The, uh, those signals are timed and they're coordinated. This goes into a request that was made the other day about altering the, the condition to change the hours at the gate was, was, uh, to be lowered. Staff had conducted a, a little bit of research. We had our transportation manager, um, get some numbers, um, from a, a count station that is, um, real close to that Vista Boulevard access point. And this is kind of a crude document, but the, uh, the red line represents the morning peak and the blue line represents the afternoon peak. And, um, and then we're, we're looking at the 85th percentile as far as how to determine what is the, the, um, the peak period, and then what is the peak hour within that peak period? And so what you have in the morning is from 6:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. is the, is the peak period, with the peak hour being between 7:00 and 8:00 in the morning. And then for the afternoon, um, we have, um, 3:30 to 8:00 p.m. is the, is the, uh, uh, p.m. hours, and then the, the peak hour in there is, uh, 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock. So based on that, um, staff is, is, uh, and we've, we've alerted the applicant, I believe we, uh, we also sent out a correspondence with the commission that, um, we're not going to be in favor of, of altering the condition anymore. So, so condition, uh, condition number five will remain the same. I think there was also some question, um, I think there was also some question regarding the, uh, the ability of the engineering manager at any time throughout the life of the project to change the hours administratively. Um, and I, at this point, I think it's best that we leave that in. If down the road at some point we see a, a change in this and, and there's, um, an opportunity for us to reduce the hours, we would certainly consider that. It's, it's clear from, from this graph here that, you know, that the hour, um, extends to 8:00 and, and that gate is, um, uh, can be opened at 7:00. And we, uh, we have no, uh, we have no reason to, to increase the time either, so staff is comfortable with, with how that condition reads. Conditions one through nine were conditions that were taken from the previous special use permit, um, with the exception of the changes to condition nine. And then I also added condition number 10, which, um, essentially states that, um, that the applicant shall comply with the requirements of the previous special use permit approval as well. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate about a number of issues during that public hearing process that, um, we're not addressing today, but they are still relevant and valid. And so, um, we just want to make it clear that, you know, as we go forward down the road, that there is no, um, misunderstanding. We want to make sure it's clear and that, uh, that everybody knows that even though this is a special use permit amendment, that that previous special use permit still has some relevancy. With that, staff is recommending approval as submitted, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
I do. Uh, Tim, how many children are there now?
Um, I believe right now they're pretty close to that 134 number.
134? Is that graph based on the 134 or the 234 that's anticipated?
Um, the graph on the overhead has, has no relationship to the number of students. The, the graph is simply the amount of traffic.
But is that a new graph those, would it? Is that from Slegge?
No, um, let me, uh, this might be kind of hard to see.
Is that just, that's a count, a count, traffic count on Vista, is it, is it not?
Right. The, uh, that, that red dot there, um, on Vista Boulevard is a count station, um, or at least the location. What happens is, is once a year, um, there are, uh, traffic counters that are, are strung across the road to count traffic, just to kind of see where we are. Um, they're, they're not out there 24/7, 365, but this is the last, uh, count data from 2011, um, that we had, and, I'm sorry. Um, and so the numbers on this graph simply reflect the amount of traffic that travels on Vista Boulevard, both north and south.
Okay, during those peak hours.
During the, during those peak hours. So the, they're, um, you know, the, the highest here is the, is the number of, of cars per, or within that hour.
Okay. And then one other question, Tim, on the, on Slegge's, on the Traffic Engineers Report, um, it says existing projected traffic volumes. It has, uh, the counts were taken during August 2012. It says figure two shows and figure three shows, but where are those figures? Two and three?
You know, I don't think that, um, you know, and I didn't include the entire. I'm going to make sure I earn my junior traffic engineer badge today.
Exactly. Well, I was just going through that, and it said figure two and three, and I went all through everything, and I couldn't find it.
So this is, uh, figure one. So what this is, is just count data. A lot of times, um, Mr. Slegge will go out and count the number of cars, um, that make various movements, and that's what, that's what this figure would represent, is the, is the counts based on those movements. And then, uh, same thing here for, for figure two.
What street it said on post for those here combined going horizontal? Read it.
Vista. It should be oriented north-south, Vista Boulevard.
And Irratible.
This is, uh, Las Altos, Irratible, and then Vista, north-south.
So, um, would you be able to provide copies of that?
Sure.
For the Commissioners? Thank you. Other questions for Tim? Thank you. Is the applicant or applicants representatives here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Pastor Art with The Rock Church, and, um, I'm just willing to answer whatever questions you guys might have, because I think Tim has done an adequate job of explaining what the nature of our request is.
I, I have just a, um, kind of a big picture question.
Sure.
When, when kids are dropped off, um, and presumably most of them come from Vista and, and go east on Irratible to, to do the drop off, do they then continue on Irratible, back down to Vista in some way or another? Or is there, are there a bunch of U-turns to get back down to Vista?
Well, the, um, people that drop off have a couple of different choices. They can continue to go west on, um, on Irratible and work their way all the way back out to, towards, um, Las Altos. Or they can choose to do a U-turn, a drop off, and then head back out, um, east on Irratible, then either go right on Vista or left on Vista, depending on their work destination.
Presumably, that's what was anticipated, uh, even though the real world is they do U-turns, but presumably the thought was that they would continue on.
That was the original thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the original thought. The, uh, the idea of putting the gate up originally was really not a fire gate. It was really intended to be a traffic control gate, which would dissuade, would, would dissuade people from using Irratible instead of the Vista entrance, and because people are creatures of habit, they're going to take the path of least possible resistance to, to drop off their kids. We also, Paul Slegge is also here this evening. If you guys have some specific, um, traffic questions that you might want to ask regarding the, the.
You know, I've, I've not been there. I, I think everyone probably did. We all drove, drove around and all the things we're considering today to look, look and see what, what it made sense to us. And I envision the vast majority of people somehow or another making a loop or a U-turn or something and coming back out to Vista that way and, and causing the left turn headaches onto Vista. So if that is the case, was there ever any consideration early on, Tim, or, uh, as to using the parking lot as a, as a vehicle that has a roundabout and that comes back out to sort of acknowledge what is already happening if people are doing U-turns?
There was some preliminary discussion about that back in '06. Even, even to the extent that we were, one of the proposals was to make the Irratible entrance one way in and no way out, um, to the extent that. to the extent that you would put up a spiking mechanism or something that would cause traffic to only go in one direction. The problem is, on Sundays, that doesn't lend itself to very healthy traffic. And the church doesn't have a budget for punctured tires if people go out the wrong way. But it was one of the original considerations.
Has there been issues with any significant number of people making that U-turn and coming back out to the Vista intersection?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, it seems to be just standard operating procedures for everybody that drops kids off, you know, in the program there. And I have no idea how many of them turn right versus turn left. I don't know.
Has there ever been a consideration, Tim, to having that entrance on to Vista be a right turn only part of the day? As a traffic pattern?
From Arachabal, at Arachabal and Vista, a right turn only?
Yeah. North, you know, going north on it.
I don't know how we would accomplish that without making it... I mean, what comes to my mind is if you're going to make a right turn, which if you go across the intersection to Winery, I think it is, on the other side, you know, there's improvements there. Let's see if we can see it on the area.
Yeah, they keep you from turning left.
You know, there are the pork chops there that will actually, you know, direct you to, you know, right turn only. You know, so without doing something like that on Arachabal, I don't know how you would have, how you would control the traffic during those hours to only do the right turn.
But it just seemed, I mean, I envision, I've not been there. I probably should have, but I've not been there at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock when a bunch of kids are dropped off. But I would think that a large percentage of them make a U-turn and then somehow try to figure out how to go south on Vista at the worst possible time of the day from the standpoint of traffic.
Well, I think the mornings are probably the worst because you have a lot of folks coming from the north that have to make the left in and then ultimately make the left out back on to Vista Boulevard. So, you know, if I had to make a statement, the morning commute is probably worse than the afternoon where people are making right in, get the kids, and then be able to make a right back on to Vista and go north. This project, I think, is, I don't want to say unique, but I think that what we have is we have a project that was required to go through special use permit originally for the construction of the church. Through that process, a traffic study was submitted and accepted by staff with certain mitigations. And those mitigations would have been the lengthening of the left turn lanes and the median alterations. And so, you know, what we have is we have a use that has satisfied those conditions. They've done what it is that they needed to do in order to mitigate the traffic impacts. And I believe that they continue to try and educate the parents as far as, you know, trying to get them to essentially make a U-turn at Vista or at Vista and Arachabal, and come back north on Vista and make that right in. And then go back out that same way, go north on Vista, and then make a U-turn and head south. I mean, it's very circuitous. And as Pastor said, people are creatures of habit, and they're going to take the path of least resistance. And I think that's why there's the situation that we have, particularly on Arachabal. You know, we heard some concerns through the area plan where, you know, at the neighborhood meeting, you know, people are concerned, you know, people come around that corner and, you know, they're probably not doing 25 either. But, you know, I think that internally, we've thrown around some ideas of, you know, what are some things that we can do? But, you know, at the end of the day, here's a project that has done what they needed to do in order to mitigate the traffic impacts. And part of that was to put that gate up to dissuade people from entering on Arachabal. Unfortunately, it's, I don't think, working how it may have intended to have worked. So, you know, that's kind of, you know, that's kind of where we are with this. And, you know, I know the, you know, there's, you know, the residents there, the businesses adjacent, you know, they, I think, have been used to having an easier time making a left turn on southbound Vista in the mornings because as those signals are timed. And so, it provides for a gap for people to be able to make a safe left turn across, you know, two travel lanes that are 45 miles an hour. And, you know, with this additional traffic, I think that, you know, there's just, there's more people trying to make that movement, and I think it becomes challenging. And I think Paul might hire me after tonight, so...
Any other questions for the applicant? Other questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. So, anyone in the audience that would like to come and speak on this item for up to three minutes, please feel free to come forward, state your name, and speak. Anyone here? Not, I'll bring it back to the planning commission. Any additional questions?
We do have a letter here. Shall we read that into the record? A letter from a neighbor?
Sure, if you'd like me to do that, I could. Happy to do it. You got it there?
Well, I don't know if we have to read the whole thing in the first...
Yeah, we, I did receive a letter from Mr. Christopher Cook the other day. I did hand you each a copy of the study session the other day. Dear Mr. Thompson, the Rock Church has been a good neighbor through the years, and my wife and I are not opposed to their expansion of their preschool and possible school. However, adding more children with parents picking up and dropping them off on Arachabal Drive will bring more congestion to Arachabal Drive and at its intersection with Vista Boulevard, a heavy traffic corridor. All traffic coming out of the Tanglewood subdivision, Imagination Station Learning Center, the Rock Church, Spanish Springs Mini Storage, and the Vista Village Retail Center, which desires to travel south on Vista Boulevard, must converge at the intersection of Vista Boulevard and Arachabal Drive. This is a concern of ours because it is already difficult to safely enter southbound onto Vista Boulevard at certain times, mostly rush hour commutes of the day. It is also not uncommon for parents and their children to be standing in traffic on Arachabal Drive while loading and unloading, which creates a public health, safety, and welfare issue given there are no crosswalks or traffic control devices in that area of Arachabal Drive. There is also not sufficient room for loading and unloading activities on either side of Arachabal Drive, where the majority of pickup and drop-off is now occurring. Therefore, if the city council approves this special use permit, we would like to suggest that it includes a provision that all pickup and drop-off of children must take place in the large north parking area of the Rock Church, and that all drivers would be encouraged to exit the Rock Church through the north parking area and travel north. Sincerely, Chris Cook.
So, I guess we've addressed that as best we can, his concerns at this point.
I hope so. I did correspond with Mr. Cook via email and, you know, responded to an email that he had sent me. So, you know, he was looking at attending tonight. I don't know if he was able to get out of his commitment or not, but...
Thank you. I think we are back at the planning commission for any additional questions. Are there any? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the special use permit associated with PCN 12030 to allow for a childcare facility and private school, adopting findings S1 through S6, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report, subject to conditions of approval 1 through 10 as listed in the staff report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, and good luck with it. Hi, Paul.
Yeah, Art, Artie Traffic Guy.
Good job.
All right, we are on to our general business items. Item number 10, PCN 06028 Sparks Legend Development LLC.
Tim Thompson, senior planner, for the record. This is a request from Red Development for the approval of architectural elevations for the proposed theater at the Legends. On the overhead is a narrowly focused site plan. Shields would be right here. This would be Building B, which has Grimaldi's and Jazz. This area here would be the large courtyard with the tower. As most of you will recall, the theater was proposed to be attached, was proposed to be attached to Building F originally, which would have been located down, farther down that main courtyard and located on the north side of the project. I think in an attempt to try and energize the project and actually bring folks into the pedestrian mall, the developer has looked at relocating the theater into the mall area. And so, this is where Building G would have been, retail Building G. Now, we're looking at a proposed theater. And then, a smaller retail building would be constructed adjacent to that at a later date. As you can see, rather than the pedestrian mall continuing on through to the marina, it now heads to the south and then will tie into the marina a little farther south, where there are the additional building pads there along the waterfront. This is, this would be the south elevation. The high part would be the location of the IMAX screen. This is a proposed IMAX theater, at least one screen. Because of the size of the screen, this roof element's going to be much taller than the rest of the building. The building is scaled appropriately and is consistent with some of the other buildings that have been constructed out there. This area here, you don't see much in the way of materials or a lot of articulation there simply because the retail building is proposed to be located to the south there. And, you know, there's really no benefit to utilizing materials on an elevation that nobody's going to see. And so, that's the reason for that. The developer has indicated that in the interim, they would be, they would consider planting grass or putting sod down in that area where the retail building would be located until that starts construction. This elevation would be the south elevation. The one on the top would be the south elevation. Again, there's a large blank area. The reason for that is, is located directly to the north of that would be the location of the proposed casino. And so, again, from a material standpoint, doesn't make a whole lot of sense or add a whole lot of value to put materials where no one's going to see them. I would say, keep in mind that should the casino not happen or some other changes take place, you know, it's really... You know, the staff will work with the developer on an appropriate treatment for that elevation. So, you know, similar to the Best Buy and even the Target, the wall adjacent to a building pad was blank. And, you know, in time, the idea is you get the building adjacent. So, but we have agreements with the applicant in those cases and even with TJ Maxx now that, you know, if something doesn't happen within a certain timeframe, that, you know, we're going to go back or they're going to go back and add those materials and that articulation on that elevation. So, just to give everybody a level of comfort. To me, this is probably the most important elevation because this is the west elevation, the elevation that will actually face the marina. You can see the brick. We added a little bit of color. The columns there. The developer's looking at using some lighting techniques to enhance that at night. You know, the center was intended to have a different feel during the day and, you know, another feel at night. And that's mostly accomplished, I think, through lighting. And so, there will be decorative lighting. They've proposed some murals on the walls that would be painted onto the brick that will help add some color and break up that facade. We had them arch the two, the two areas in the center to kind of break up that linear look. And then down here at the bottom is just an idea of what the retail building would look like adjacent to the theater. And then they also did some night renderings for us just to give us an idea of kind of how it would look at night. So, I mean, you can see, you know, two-dimensional, but you can see the attempt to try and enhance the columns and use some lighting to enhance the look of the building. So, staff is, again, recommending approval for this, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Jeff McMahon is here to also answer any questions you might have. And I think he'd also like to be able to give you a little bit of an update.
Would the commission prefer to hear from the applicant first and then ask questions? Is that all right?
That would be good.
That's fine.
Very good. Jeff McMahon, 4717 Central, Kansas City, Missouri, for one of the partners of Red Development. Want to thank you for the opportunity. It's been a while since we've been back. But we're very excited to be here. As you can imagine, I'm sure there's lots of news you've read in the newspaper. And I'm certainly available here to answer any questions that you may have. I wanted to start out by, not just talking about design. Tim does such a good job at talking about design. And we worked so hard together to get these elevations so that they're pretty far along when they come to you. And so, certainly, it's a credit to Tim and his hard work. This past June, Red announced that we had successfully refinanced Legends at Sparks Marina. The financing, refinancing included over $30 million of private new investment to complete 300,000 square feet of new retail space. This was an important turning point for the property, and now we're making good progress on several key elements, as I'm sure you're aware. Many of them have been in front of this body already, and we're pleased that we're able to move those forward. And everyone benefits from a really, a fully realized, completed project, and we're back in the road to making that happen. If you go by the property, you'll see that TJ Maxx is under construction, and they'll be opening this fall, probably within the next 60 days. I don't have the exact date, but the turnover, I think, is within the next 60 days. Old Navy's going to open just after the first of the year, a little further behind TJ Maxx, but we're real excited about that. It's actually an Old Navy outlet. It's not Old Navy. It's their outlet concept. Taco Bell is under construction after...
Finally.
Finally, after a couple of years. So, we're very happy to get Taco Bell going as well. You've probably also heard that we have SUP submission that we've applied for, for a Walmart. If you recall, when the project first came before this body, there was a Walmart included in the project, and they've now come back. So, we've kind of gone full circle on that. The submission is not deemed complete yet. We continue to work with staff on many of the details of that. In fact, one of the meetings that we had today, we got a good work session with staff on that as well. So, we're real forward, really excited to move that forward. Which brings us to the theater. We're extremely excited about the theater. We've been... We've been talking about it for a long time. You know, I, I kind of joke just a little bit that, you know, when we got put in timeout on the project, that now that it's back to us, when you come back, you've got fresh ideas. And there's new people that, they're working on it, new people are looking at it. One of those fresh ideas was how do we better utilize the theater into the project to more engage it into the courtyard? The west end of the project previously, although I think would have been successful, I think needs something in there to really generate and get more foot traffic. Get the parking closer to the entries to the stores. And, and the site plan that Tim showed up there, we think, does that. By moving the theater into the project, working with the casino on a, on a land swap, we're able to get the entrance to the theater and the entrance, and the second entrance to the casino right into the courtyard, right at the heart of the project, where the tower is, the entrance to Shields is, and, and of course, the second floor to go up to a future tenant that we're talking to up there. So, we're very excited about the, moving the theater forward. From a timing standpoint, we, well, with, with your, hopefully, your approval tonight, we're kicking off the architectural drawings. They're scheduled to be done by the end of this year and into codes for permitting. And it's our hope to be under construction just after the first of the year with an opening of the theater in or about November 15th of next year. So, we're, got to work hard at it to make that. Theaters take a little bit longer to build than some of the other buildings, but that's, that's certainly our goal, to get them open before the holidays of next fall. As Tim mentioned, it's a, it's an IMAX. There's not another IMAX in the state of Nevada, other than, I think, there may be one in Las Vegas. The closest is probably Sacramento. It's certainly a regional draw, and we're very excited. We've been able to acquire the, an IMAX license. The operator of the facility is Galaxy Theaters, and you can look them up on the internet to learn more about them. They, they were in town a few weeks ago. They, they made some press releases and kind of introduced themselves to the community. So, they do a great job of operating theaters, and we're very excited to get the theater going. The size is approximately the same size as the last application. It doesn't have the second story inside of it. The last application, it had a mezzanine, and there was a bar up on the mezzanine. So, I guess the footprint is the same, but it's slightly smaller. There is going to be a bar on the first level and not the second level. So, and there's, there's more amenities that we're going to announce down the road, but certainly, we want this to be a state-of-the-art theater. The type of amenities that we're going to be announcing are different than anything that's in the community today, including the IMAX. So, we look forward to that. As far as, Tim talked about the design. I'm not going to touch on it much at all. Did a great job. Obviously, lighting is important to us, and we also know that, you know, this is an entertainment facility, so we wanted to get some color. It's, the materials are chosen off of the pallets that have been previously approved. So, we were able to work with those. A lot of the elements of the exterior are similar or the same elements to the theater in its previous location. So, we're not really blazing a lot of new ground on the materials itself, other than just the new location. So, with that said, I'm available for any questions you may have, and we look forward to moving it forward.
Any questions?
I have a question. It doesn't really have to do with the elevations, and so I hope that Mr. Thonley will allow us to talk about it for a moment. I went out today to, just as I do before any of these meetings, I think everyone does, to kind of wander around and see if there's anything that stood out to me. And I, maybe I'm just way off base, but it seems to me that the footprint of this theater sits right on top of the current access road. Am I wrong?
That's correct. The access road that's in place right now is a temporary road. And the, in fact, the LID road that comes in from the north off of the roundabout comes in, and where you see the curb and gutter end, then it picks up into a temporary that kind of goes along the perimeter of the casino property, on our property, through the courtyard to get through. And that was really a temporary solution for holiday traffic. As you probably recall, a couple of years ago, when the project first opened, that road wasn't in, and the holidays were a nightmare. It's been a very good solution on a temporary basis. But we're working with Olympia to work on a, you know, we're going to have to move that road in order to build our building and build their building, and then construct the permanent road. So, there's some phasing that we have to work through. You're correct.
Presumably, that road will go on the, on further west.
In fact, you can just pick up the curb line, what Tim is pointing to right there, where that text is. That's the new location of the road.
So, you would be building that as you're constructing this prior?
I imagine what we will do, and we haven't worked out the detail. We'll have to work through that with, with staff. But I would imagine we're going to either construct it temporarily to open up the pad to get it built, or depending on our timeframe, build it permanent so we don't have to build it twice and then, and then construct. So, we haven't worked that part out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just so glad you asked that, because I couldn't figure that out either. And I walked around, and I could not figure it out. So, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, move to approve the architectural building elevations for the proposed theater courtyard, Building G, and the fulfillment of the requirement set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 06028.
Second. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to just, since you might leave before we get to the public comments at the end here, there was some discussion at our study session Tuesday about the likelihood that the parking area that is in front of Grimaldi's and to the south of where this building will be, will be, will probably be, become the sort of the main parking lot for the theater, presumably?
That's the intent, yes.
Right. Which is, makes sense. But that area, or a good part of that area, is used very often over the course of a year for special events, like the Halloween thing now. And some of us, at least envision the same kinds of issues that we had at the holidays before the access road was put in. If, if that's used for something that would take up all that parking, that might then be used for the theater. So, I hope that you are keeping that in mind when you...
But, you know, we do. Those types of events are important to us. And I can't say that it's going to be, in the future, located at that exact spot, but we'll find a place to locate it.
We don't mind them being there, but we just don't want to be dealing with huge traffic problems if that's the successful theater parking as well.
You know, we, all these decisions are made not by one or two people. You know, we obviously want your input, but, you know, tenants like Steve Shield of Shields, all our tenants have input into how we treat the parking lots because it affects their business. So, but, but we're very sensitive to our tenants and to your concerns. So, we'll keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, I think we are moving back to item seven, the discussion of distribution of staff report material electronically. Armando, is that your discussion or someone else? Tim's going to handle that?
As we discussed the other day in the study session, staff is, you know, we're, we're always looking to become more efficient and streamline our processes. And, and so, you know, we've, I think, identified some, some potential efficiencies with regard to how we distribute the planning commission staff reports. And so, we wanted to solicit some input from the commission on what works for you, what's accessible or acceptable, what, what ideas do you have, what works for you? And, and then, you know, staff can go back and kind of figure out how, you know, we can satisfy your needs and make the process more efficient for us. You know, Janet spends a great deal of time making copies and putting packets together. And so, we're looking to, to try and streamline that and free her up to do some other tasks. And, and so, you know, we, we have some ideas, but we want to, we want to hear from the commission.
Mr. Chair? Go ahead.
Tim, I personally don't have a problem with getting it electronically and printing it myself. Because I know it does take Janet time to drive to each one of our houses and, you know, maneuver driveways and dogs and kids and put them on the front porch. So, I, for one, do not have a problem printing it myself.
I printed out this month at my office, where I got the email and carried it home to find a packet on my front porch. So, I now have two packets. I suggest maybe it might, there may be some folks that that is an issue for, but that somehow or another, if it, if you can just hold the commissioners individually as to whether electronics would work and if it wouldn't.
How would we get like these?
The handbook.
These type of things bother me. How, you know, you know, not having that physically in something that's larger, the color ones. The standard little black and white is not a problem, but I, you know, I question on these type of things.
But we could also request that we get an actual PDF. Like on the Kylie handbook, I actually have a PDF of that document that we could have included as a packet. Instead of giving you a paper copy, we have an actual PDF file. And the same thing with the, like, the elevations. We could be getting, we just change our process of intake. We would require that it be in an electronic format that then we can forward to you and, and the city council.
Whoops, I pushed something on. I'm sorry, guys. No one else was supposed to touch that. So, we did that. We could also just bring our laptop with us, right?
You could.
Do that.
And there is Wi-Fi in here now, and so if you have a laptop, and, you know, we can work with IT to, to get you on the, on the Wi-Fi network so that, you know, you have Wi-Fi while you're here.
Well, if you downloaded it, you wouldn't even need Wi-Fi, would you?
No.
Yeah, so, sounds good to me. But I'm a short timer, so.
What are your thoughts? So, are you, just in terms of what Commissioner Spurber was talking about, that sort of thing, obviously, it couldn't be printed out unless we had some capacity to print out on very large paper. But, but the actual material could be downloaded, even in color?
Yeah.
And then you could zoom in. You could actually, you know, if you have it on your laptop or whatever electronic medium you have, you could always zoom in and look at it even closer than you can on the 11 by 17s.
Yeah, the, those elevations, I have, I have PDFs of those. So, this, I was going to use them, but the computer's not on, so had to use the overhead. But, but yeah, I, you know, we, we have the ability to ask for those things now. And, you know, if, if we don't, we also have the ability now to scan in color, you know, without having to trouble somebody and the special scanner and so...
So, I'm assuming, maybe a suggestion here, since I think everyone at least has, has the capacity to look at it on a computer and print it out or keep, or bring the computer here. But if we, if we started doing that and found out, and if we found out by someone describing at a study session that they, they weren't satisfied with what they were looking at, that you would have the ability to, to do something between Tuesday and Thursday? To get in a hard copy?
I think so, yeah.
You know, like for elevations, we always have the big sheets anyway. We can bring those to study session, too.
So, you don't always have to study section, though, too?
No.
I was just thinking of a way to get feedback before we came here with, you know, someone dissatisfied on a Thursday night.
I mean, you can, you know, we're always available. You can always, you know, email us, reply to the email. Hey, you know, would you mind having a large copy for me available at Tuesday's study session? Or if, you know, if we're not having a study session, can I drop by and pick it up? You know, we're, we're happy to do those things.
Do you need some formal action, or do you have enough feedback?
I think, you know, just in the interest of taking into account the views of the two members who are in here, we will maybe give them a call and sort of discuss with them what we discussed with you and just get their thoughts on it as well, and then before we make any final decision. But it sounds like at least the majority of those, of those of you here present are willing to receive it in an electronic form, subject to the caveat that, you know, if you need something additional, we would provide it to you.
That's acceptable. Very good.
A lot of gas, huh?
Well, just the idea of not printing the entire handbook every time we have something is, is major.
All right, I think we can move on from item seven then to item number 11, public comment. Anyone in the public? No one, no publics here. Comments from the commissioners?
Oh, Commissioner Lena and I were talking about whether it, if there was some reason why we could not start earlier than 6:30. Most all of us work, and we finish our workday at 4:30 or 5:00 and try to figure out what the hell to do for the next hour and a half between leaving work and getting here. Is there, is it reasonable to start earlier?
Doug, do you have a problem too with that?
And staff, any problem?
Yeah, you know, several years ago, the commission meetings actually started at 7:00. And I believe Commissioner Breslow at the time asked that they be started at 6:30 so he could make sure he made it to the basketball game.
I think he wanted 6 o'clock, actually.
Oh, that's great.
So, yeah, I mean, it's certainly something to consider. I believe you have to change your rules of procedure. I believe your rules of procedure set forth the time.
I don't know if Doug, if they do. If they do, that's easy enough to change.
I'm, I'm pretty sure your rules of procedure set forth when you have the meetings, the date.
Okay. Well, I think, just, just having casual conversations with people, you know, I think most people, at least tonight, and the, most people, I think, are, you know, 5:30 or 6:00 would be fine with us if, if there's no, no, nothing that would keep it from happening.
In the past, for those of us who've been on for a long time, it was a handful of commissioners that couldn't get out of work at that time or didn't want to or whatnot.
And couldn't get across town in that length of time.
I certainly don't have any problem with earlier. Earlier, the better, but it's just a matter of whether staff can...
Yeah, it's most important that works for you guys.
And I think, I think the other important aspect is, you know, these are public meetings, and part of the process involves public hearings. And so, we also want to make sure that it's convenient for the public to attend these meetings and have the opportunity to, to comment on, on projects. And so, I think that's another, another aspect to consider as well. You know, I think the, the thought may have been, you know, at 7 o'clock, for example, you know, gives folks the opportunity to get home, get something to eat, and then come to, come to the meeting. You know, so, you know, something else to consider.
That said, the city council meeting started too.
That's what?
Yeah. That said, the city council meeting started too.